All right, the time is 5 o'clock. And I will call to meeting, or a call to order, the meeting of the Camrio Library Board for today, Wednesday, October 14th, 2020. May we please have a roll call?
Trustee Craven?
Here.
Trustee Kildy?
Here.
Trustee Tremblay?
Here.
President Protim Santangelo?
Here.
President Molshay?
Present. To make it easy, I will lead us in the flag salute. If everyone can please stand and put your right hand over your heart. Join me in the pledge and ready begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and with republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any amendments to this agenda?
There are no amendments to this agenda.
And do we have any public comments at this time?
There are no public comments. Well, you should ask for public comments.
Yeah, I will ask for public comments. If there is any attendees in the meeting, if you'll please raise your hand and I can call on you to provide a public comment for the Camrio Library Board. Seeing none, I'll move on to the consent calendar. Do I have any public comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll look to...
I'll move the approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can we please call the vote?
Trustee Craven?
Yes.
Trustee Kildy?
Yes.
Trustee Tremblay?
Yes.
President Protim Santangelo?
Yes.
President Molshay?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll go down to comments from staff and I believe Mr. Thomas.
Yes, good evening, Mr. President, members of the Library Board. We do have with us tonight Patricia Crosby, interim director for the Camrio Public Library, and she does have just a few brief comments for us tonight.
Hi, good evening, everybody. It's nice to meet you all. Just wanted to say it's good being here. I appreciate this and the staff here at the Camrio Public Library is fantastic. Curbside continues to be a very popular success. You can see the numbers there with the metrics and statistics pages. And we are still receiving positive comments, both in person when folks pick up their materials as well as over the phone and some through email. So it's always good to hear that and pass that along to the staff and they receive those in person as well, so that's good news. We did have a record-breaking day in mid-September where we actually served 204 people in one day, so that was a pretty busy day. And Tuesdays do seem to be the busiest day and the trend is that it waxes and wanes a little bit throughout the week with Saturday being pretty quiet normally. So the RFBC is going pretty strong. We are having expanded virtual programming options. Our business coordinator Nicole Valdivia has really been maintaining the collection and keeping those materials up to date. And the attendance for the summer's virtual meetings, trainings, and events have all increased as well. Adult literacy, Misty Finch, our literacy coordinator, has been promoting several new workshops from the California Library Literacy Services. We've got 25 participants that attended a lot of those and some of the features of those were the COVID diary writing workshop, what's on the ballot, and the new resume project. So people are logging on to those as well. So, thank you. My comments.
Thank you, Ms. Crosby, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Any comments from Library trustees?
Yeah, can I have a comment, Mr. Molshay, if I may?
Go ahead, Mr. Kildy.
Do we have an update about a potential, and I know it's a little premature, but a potential reopening? Is there any updated information on that, that we are at liberty or have any updated information that we can share?
So this is something that we are continuing to evaluate. There are meetings amongst the county and the cities so that any opening is effective across really the county, so not one agency gets ahead of the other. At this point, there isn't any date set for a library reopen. We did move from purple into red and that still has a high limited occupancy rate and also under retail guidelines, it's fairly limited in the kind of services that would be able to be provided. In some cases, services may just be limited to people being able to pick up physical holds. And so we are looking at the efficiencies of paying for staff to implement all the protocols necessary, but then weighing that against how much service is actually going to be able to be provided. We've, we along with other libraries in the county have had a lot of success with the curbside service and so many are just going to continue with that and see how things progress within the county. Even students at this point are not back in the classroom yet and even that is limited and so we're kind of waiting for all these factors and evaluating as we go. There is no set date at this time.
Thank you for the update. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kildy. Any other comments from trustees? Seeing none. Thank you again, Mrs. Crosby.
Thank you.
I will adjourn the meeting of the Camrio Library Board.
I'll call the meeting of the Camrio Sanitary District Board to order and ask the record to reflect that all board members are present. Do we have any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments.
I don't see anybody but council members, so I don't know if there's anybody to raise their hand as a member of the public who'd like to speak during public comments.
I would just ask that anybody that is attending, if they would like to speak, go ahead and raise their hand. This would be to address the Camrio Sanitary District.
Is there anyone who would like to address the Camrio Sanitary District Board during public comments?
There are no hands being raised.
Okay. That gets us to the consent calendar. Is there anyone who would like to address the Camrio Sanitary District Board on an item on the consent calendar? There are two items.
Again, no hands are being raised.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
I'll move the approval of the consent calendar as submitted.
I'll second. I'll let Vice Mayor take it.
There's a motion and a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Director Tremblay?
Yes.
Director Santangelo?
Yes.
Director Molshay?
Yes.
Secretary Kildy?
Yes.
Chair Craven?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Are there comments from staff?
No, no comments from staff.
Comments from board members? I take that as a no. I have one. I attended a CASA Federal Legislative Committee meeting and what we did pretty much was review all of the legislative actions at the federal level that we were supporting and trying to have approved. The lobbyist feels that very little is going to pass as far as water bills or sanitary bills, infrastructure funding between now and the end of this Congress. There might be one water bill that passes, but almost everything that we supported in the current Congress, there are plans to reintroduce in January for the upcoming Congress. So those things should move ahead and those things involve some of the types of grants that we're looking to get. So that's all I had to report. If there's nothing else, we will adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Craven. We'll go ahead and call this meeting of the Camrio Successor Agency to order. I'll let the record reflect that all board members are present. Madam Clerk, are there any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments.
All right. Madam Clerk, I cannot see whether or not I have any hands raised for public comment on the laptop that I'm using, so I have to ask you, are there any public comments?
Well, I'd ask if anybody would like to address the successor agency to raise their hand. And seeing no hands raised, you can move forward.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and move then to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, are there any hands raised for public comment on the consent calendar?
If anybody's interested in speaking to the consent calendar, please raise your hand. And seeing no hands raised, I would move forward.
All right. Then at this point, I think it would be appropriate to entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
Move the approval of consent.
All right, I think Board Member Kildy motioned with a second by Council Member Craven.
Sure.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Council Member Craven?
Yes.
Council Member Kildy?
Yes.
Council Member Molshay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Santangelo?
Yes.
Mayor Tremblay?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you, Jeffrey. That brings us to, are there any comments from staff? Are there any comments from board members to the successor agency? All right, hearing none, we're going to go ahead and adjourn that meeting of the successor agency. We're going to go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Camrio City Council for Wednesday, October 14th, 2020, to order. Let the record please reflect that all members of the council are present. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments.
All right. We've received, and I'll let the record note that there are no presentations. Before we go to the consent calendar, let me make a little bit of an announcement. Tonight, the attendees will note, the public will note that we're running our Zoom meetings slightly differently than we have in the past. We have provided detailed instructions regarding public participation in the agendas for tonight's meeting, so you would see those detailed instructions at the very beginning, the cover page of the agenda. For each item on the agenda, I'm going to ask if any attendee would like to speak to the item. Attendees that wish to speak will raise their hands in Zoom and I will call on each attendee in the order that hands were raised. Madam Clerk, since I don't have that function currently on my laptop, I may have to ask you if there are any hands raised. In any event, when your name is called, you'll be prompted to unmute your microphone and allow to speak. Please be sure that all of the background noise, the TV and radio, et cetera, are all muted. You will have three minutes. You will see a timer on your screen that will count down your three minutes and when the three minutes have elapsed, your microphone will be muted and I will move on or we will move on to the next speaker. So with all of that in place, we're going to move to item three, which is the consent calendar. On the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, do we have any hands raised among attendees for public comment on the consent calendar?
There are no hands raised currently.
All right, members of the council, do you have any items that you wish to pull with regard or recuse on the consent calendar? Mr. Molshay?
Not that I need to recuse myself, looking at our policy for item F in regards to the city street trees and sidewalk Mission Oaks area for a contract for professional services, I just want to point out that the Mission Oaks is within, it's outside 500 feet of my private residence, but within the sphere of 1,000 feet. So our policy states that we generally don't need to recuse ourselves. I'd just like to point that out, though.
Yeah, is Mr. Pirik on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Pirik, since I live in Mission Oaks as well, is there any need for me to recuse myself on this item?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. I will also note for the record that with regard to item 3F pursuant to the instructions on the agenda, we have had a written email from a resident on that item and I would like the record to reflect that that email will be incorporated into tonight's record that's been provided to all of the council members for review. All right, with that, there are no public comments, there are no changes. I think it's probably appropriate at this point then to ask for a motion.
Move the approval.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion by Council Member Craven and a second by Council Member Kildy. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Council Member Craven?
Yes.
Council Member Kildy?
Yes.
Council Member Molshay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Santangelo?
Yes.
Mayor Tremblay?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously.
All right. That brings us then to item four, Public Works. And 4A is the City Hall Chamber remodel conceptual design review. May we please have a presentation from staff on that item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Tremblay. Senior Engineer Eric Maple will be giving his presentation tonight.
Great, thank you. Let me go ahead and pull that up. Okay, I'm going to be talking about the City Hall Council Chambers remodel project, specifically the conceptual design review. And the goal of this presentation is to present concept renderings of the council chambers remodel project so that council can provide staff input so that we can complete final design based on input received. In terms of a project overview, the City Hall Council Chambers remodel project generally consists of improvements to the council chambers to improve ADA access, layout, audiovisual needs, lighting, and finishes. On September 5th, 2019, staff presented a concept plan showing the layout of the room with the proposed improvements, which I'll show you in the next slide. On January 8th, 2020, council awarded the final design contract and staff has been proceeding to complete that design. After receiving input from council from this presentation, staff will continue to work to complete the design and propose final colors and finishes at a future council meeting, which is estimated to be in the summer of 2021. Construction is currently scheduled for the fiscal year 2223 in the five-year CIP and as part of the five-year CIP update process next year, the project timing will be reevaluated and any proposed changes to the schedule will be highlighted in the Public Works CIP presentation, which is anticipated in April of 2021. I'm going to turn on my virtual laser pointer here. So a brief overview of the concept plan that was chosen that we're moving forward with in the design that shows the proposed layout. It mainly consists of ADA improvements and access improvements, including a ramp here to the lower area and ADA seating and an ADA podium, as well as a ramp leading to the presentation area. There's a net amount of additional seats added. And another major difference is the staff seating here is split. And there are presentations, monitors going to be on the wall redundant to the current dropdown screen over here on the left. But in general, the outer perimeter you see here of the room and the bones of the structure are not being touched. So the architect provided concept renderings grouped in three general materials behind the dais, wood paneling, acoustic paneling, and stone facade. And so based on these renderings, you can kind of see different elements that we're going to need your input on. And I'm going to go ahead and go through those now. So the first one is what we call a wood paneling. Turn this laser pointer back on. This wood paneling area right here behind the dais and it's shown with dark wood with inlay separating the, or a border separating the flush dark wood inlay with acoustic panels on either side. And the rest of the wood in the chambers would be dark. This is a similar view with just lighter woods, just so you can see a difference, contrast with the lighter wood versus the darker wood. And it should be noted that the recommended carpet seat colors and finishes like the desk surface, et cetera, will be proposed at a future council date. And for these renderings, it's just for illustration purposes only. For example, you'll see like blue fabric on seats and things like that. And that will be chosen at a later time based on the selected overall look so that staff could propose colors that match. Another general note is that the white railing here on this ramp, that's shown just for illustration purposes only and staff will propose something that is minimal as possible regarding the photos that are taken up here on the presentation area. Okay, moving on to the next general grouping of type of material, we're calling this one acoustic paneling. And basically what it is, is a furred-out wall behind the council dais with a painted wall that just provides contrast with other acoustic paneling behind it. And again, this one's just showing dark wood. Similar materials, just different colors showing a lighter wood. And then this is the third grouping of materials and we're calling this one stone facade behind the council dais. And that's, I have a small zoom-in picture here of what that looks like. I believe we've all seen something like this. It's a rock face type of material with some kind of repeating but random pattern. And this is the same material, just with a lighter color wood. And I can revisit any of these if you wish to go back. So staff's recommendation is for city council direction to complete the design based on the wood paneling dark wood concept, which is also shown here as well. And so I'm going to pause and allow for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Maple. Are there any, do council members have any questions for Mr. Maple?
I have a question, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Kildy.
Yeah. Do we know what kind of wood potentially that will be? Is it maple? Is it, or is it, do you have any updates on the type of wood that they're going to use?
I don't. If I had the venture to guess, I'd probably say like a walnut or a darker wood. But we'll be looking at a variety of different types for this application.
So really, potentially won't be a type of wood that's stained. It'll be as close to whatever color we decide tonight in its original, you know, standard then.
That's correct, but we'll also provide the details of what that is at a future council date.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Ms. Santangelo?
Is there a significant cost difference between any of these designs?
I would say it's in the realm of maybe $20,000 or $40,000 with the rock facade being the more expensive option.
Thank you.
Mr. Molshay?
And are there, particularly with the wood paneling and the rock facade, do those present any kind of acoustic challenges or issues that staff is aware of?
We're not aware of any significant challenges with those. We do have as part of our architect consultant team, an audio specialist, and so even if the rock facade option was chosen, I feel that we can address those concerns with the design.
All right, thanks.
Are there other, before I go to ask for public comments, are there any other questions from council members? All right, hearing none.
Tony, you're muted.
Thank you, Mrs. Craven. Madam Clerk, I don't, my screen does not show any, it does not show the hands raised function for any public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Nobody has raised their hand at this point.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we're going to then now go to comments from members of the council, discussion by the council. Who would like to start? I think Mrs. Craven's got her hand raised.
Yes, I, could you put the preferred one up or the last one you had back? I like this one and I asked to have it on so that everybody know which one it was. I do not care for the light woods myself, but I think that when you, I think that, excuse me, a building should all be matching as far as design. This, this building is very much Spanish style as you're entering. Light wood doesn't really go with that, so as you come into the council chambers, I think the dark wood complements the, and goes with the entire design of the building. I like this one very much. I do not care for at all the stone in the back, that design. So those are my comments.
Thank you. You'd like to go next. Vice Mayor Santangelo?
I completely agree with Mrs. Craven about it being more consistent with the rest of the building. This was my favorite design as well. I think, I love the contrast between the dark wood and the light. And I too have concerns about the stone. I think that's a little bit, will end up being a more dated design. I think this is more time, will last longer. So I really, I love this one. I think it's beautiful.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Who would like to go next? Mr. Kildy?
I'm going to be a little bit different in some ways. I do like the darker wood. I think that really lends itself to the building that it's going to be in as well. However, I do like the stone. I think the stone would give us a modern, updated look. I think we need to remember that we're probably not going to be revisiting this for probably 30, 40, maybe 50 years. So whatever we pick, I think we need to really think about how it's going to be perceived 30 years from now. So my thoughts are, it's not that I do not like this one here, I just think that the stone one adds some really interesting surface interest to it and it would kind of accentuate this facility for years to come. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Kildy. Mr. Molshay?
I'll just simply say I like, I prefer the one that's up on the screen as well. I like the stone least and I'm fine with the one that everyone else has more or less supported thus far.
All right. For the reasons that Mrs. Craven and Ms. Santangelo gave and Mr. Molshay, I prefer the wood paneling dark wood option. So with that in mind, does staff need, does staff need us to go ahead and make that in the form of a motion?
I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Dave and I'm going to go ahead and turn off my video.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, that would be appropriate.
All right. May I please have someone make a motion to that effect?
I'll move that we direct staff to proceed with the conceptual design with the wood paneling dark wood.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion by Vice Mayor Santangelo, second by Council Member Craven. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Council Member Craven?
Yes.
Council Member Kildy?
Yes.
Council Member Molshay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Santangelo?
Yes.
Mayor Tremblay?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously.
All right. That completes our item on 4A. Now we're going to go to item five on the city manager docket and that will be childcare stipend agreement for services.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Winkler will be handing over this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Winkler.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, we will be following up on our September 23rd council item in regards to possibilities for grant fund redirection and specifically the possibility of providing short-term childcare services in Camrio. Since that presentation, staff has investigated childcare center closures and has identified what we've and has identified what we believe is a solution which meets councils' interests in assisting Camarillo's currently existing childcare centers without adding any new competition to the market. The childcare center data presented during our last council meeting was tracked back to Child Development Resources of Ventura County. Child Development Resources, or CDR, enriches and strengthens the lives of children and their families in Ventura County through high-quality children's programs. CDR actively develops, secures, and promotes a variety of programs and resources to serve the needs of children, families, and the community of Ventura County. CDR supports over 3,000 families by administering state-funded subsidies paid directly to the childcare providers. CDR is the only state-funded resource and referral agency in Ventura County providing care, training at no cost, and no cost childcare referrals for families. Through our research conducted with the assistance of CDR, it was identified that the supply of childcare providers in the city of Camarillo is in a fragile state due to reductions in revenue and increases in costs. As a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, licensed childcare providers are at risk of closing. To continue operating, businesses are facing a reduction in revenue due to health requirements, including but not limited to reducing the number of children that can be served at any time. They also must contend with additional expenses such as sanitizing, safety equipment, and additional staff time. Providing financial assistance directly to these childcare providers is an efficient means of offsetting the challenges for them to stay open. Financial support for these small businesses will provide some stability to continue to serve the children and their care. CDR can provide the services to support the city's goals for families and these small businesses. As part of the proposed Camarillo Licensed Childcare Stipend Program, CDR will manage the distribution of funds to all eligible licensed childcare providers, both center-based and family childcare providers located in the city of Camarillo limits. Childcare providers would be provided with a stipend based on a $66 per child according to the provider's licensed capacity, with a minimum stipend per facility of $924 and a maximum stipend of $5,000. This program could serve up to 54 licensed childcare facilities in the city of Camarillo with a licensed capacity of 2,296 children. That includes 24 childcare centers with a licensed capacity of 2,010 children and 29 family childcare providers with a licensed capacity of 286 children. The maximum cost for this program would not exceed $119,600. So to be eligible for a program, a childcare provider must be licensed with the California Community Care Licensing, a part of the California Department of Social Services. Licensed facilities include centers and family childcare homes. The program must be open and providing services to families in the Camarillo city limits. The zip code must be 93010 or 93012. Staff has verified that all of the facilities are indeed located in the city of, Camarillo city limits. Since a few of the childcare centers are also churches, the funds must not be used for inherent religious activities. Eligible providers must not have received a business recovery grant through the Ventura County Community Foundation. And the childcare providers must complete an application and self-certified under penalty or perjury as to the information required in the application. Applications will be offered online and with an electronic signature. So CDR will initiate the outreach campaign to all eligible providers from their resource and referral database. They're very connected. The process, they will process and approve all the applications. They will send a denial letter to any childcare providers that apply but have already received a business recovery grant through the Ventura County Community Foundation. And we've connected with both the VCCF and CDR in regards to this, and they are willing to collaborate on that front. CDR will also pay childcare providers directly based on the following, which is the rate of $66 per child according to the provider's licensed capacity. We set a minimum of $924 per facility to make an impact and a maximum of $5,000 to, to be equitable to the businesses that are getting the grants through the, through the recovery grant. They will also issue 1099 forms as required and invoice the city for expenses, including number of providers and amounts issued and the administrative expenses incurred. And finally, they will provide a report to the city on expenses and the number of providers served at the completion of the contract. As far as timeline goes, in the first month, CDR will engage all of the potential providers. In the second month, CDR will follow up with the providers who have not yet completed the application. And at the third month, the program will end. CDR will then consult with the city and we will, they will return all the unspent funds to the city. So thank you, council, for your time this evening in consideration of a Camarillo Licensed Childcare Stipend Program. And we have with us tonight Stuart Orlinsky, the Program Operations Analysis Officer of Child Development Resources. And Mr., and Mr. Orlinsky and I are available for questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Winkler. Do members of the council have questions? Let's start with Mrs. Craven, followed by Vice Mayor Santangelo.
I have several questions, but first I want to congratulate staff. We told you last time, we didn't think the other way would do it. You went out and you found something that I think is a much better solution to help the existing ones. But that brings up a question. It says on the first page of the staff report that of the 29 which had been open, only 15 are currently open. So I want to make sure this is, money is only going to go to centers that are currently open. They have to be open and accepting children in order to qualify.
Yes, that is correct. And since the time of the last report, it is reported that only three centers are currently closed in Camarillo.
Okay, well, the number doesn't matter. I just don't want to be giving money to places that aren't open because I don't think $5,000 would, would help them open up again. So I had a couple of other questions. The, I understand, as I understand it, the county and the community foundation are still at odds with the names of the small businesses that received the $5,000 grants. I don't know what happened at yesterday's board meeting, but until then, they were still at odds with making those names public. The community foundation will give the names to CDR? Or will at least confirm or that, that those businesses have or have not received?
Yes, Mrs. Craven. Yes, CDR and VCCF are communicating and able to share that information with each other.
Okay. And just to make it clear, all of these numbers that are listed in the staff report are one time, they're not per week, as we were talking about last time.
Correct, yes. The benefit of this program is a one-time expense. We know exactly how much we're going to spend at maximum, and that is all.
Okay, thank you very much. Those were my questions.
All right, I think Vice Mayor Santangelo is next.
Thank you. I have the same question of, just to confirm that it was a one-time payment. So I appreciate that. Mrs. Craven brought up a good point about those centers that are not currently opening. But, you know, if this money were to enable a center to open, is there a way to work with them so they can sort of open? And I mean, I don't, you know, if this can help them open and function, I wouldn't want them to be left out.
Yeah, the three centers that are open are, or that are not open are probably unlikely to open due to the research that we've conducted. So we will distribute funds, or CDR will distribute funds to all those who are open.
Okay. And then will there be any issue with, you know, have we thought about, are we going to disclose who gets funds? And is there going to be an issue with, with that? That, like the other grant program is currently experiencing?
Yeah, and in some cases, the CDR is unable to release the names of facilities with less than eight child, children in, in the presence. So we, we do have a list of all, of, of all of those facilities that we've already vetted. I don't know if Stuart is available to, to answer that question as well.
Good evening, council members. My name is Stuart Orlinsky. I'm the Programs Operations Analysis Officer at CDR. The question regarding releasing the information. Yeah, licensing does require us not to release information what we call small family childcare providers of serving eight children or less. The other types, the family childcare, which are called large, which serves 14 children, and licensed centers are, their information is public already. We can add into the application that consent that the person can opt in or opt out to consent to have their information shared publicly about this if he would like.
I, I think, I think it should. And I think it'll maybe take care of any issues going forward and any delays in getting the money out.
Okay.
No other questions on Ms. Santangelo? Okay, Mr. Mulchay.
Thank you. I only have one question, and it's directed towards Mr. Orlinsky. Knowing that CDR already provides services and support to child daycare centers in Camarillo and throughout the county, I just want to make sure that in providing these funds, it's not going to offset funds that are already allocated or earmarked for, for facilities. But in that, in that it will be an addition to what you guys are already facilitating and providing these childcare day centers?
Yes, this will be in addition to.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kildie.
Yes, thank you. I was wondering, I just have one question. By the way, I commend staff for bringing this forward. Could you walk me through how we are going to decide the minimum stipend? I think it was 924 and the maximum of 5,000. What's the criteria for that, if you would?
Yes, Councilmember Kildie. The, the main issue with the minimum stipend was we felt that if we were to say you only get eight times 66, that would just not make a significant impact on a facility. And it may not be worth the time, you know, spent from staff and from CDR to distribute those funds. So we set, we set a floor to make sure we have an impact on all the childcare facilities. As far as the cap goes of $5,000, some of the facilities would have gotten upwards of $20,000 per this capacity. And we felt that, you know, with the, with the grant program, we've set a cap of $5,000. And we didn't want to be inequitable to favor any particular industry more than any other. So we wanted to make sure that we capped this program at $5,000 as well.
Okay, and then just a follow-up question. Once we get, get up to about the $119,000, is that, is that the maximum in the program, maximum allowable amount of money that we have?
Correct.
And obviously, they know that. I mean, they'll, they know all of the ins and outs, if you will, when they, when they apply. That will be thoroughly explained as well.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kildie. So I've got questions for both Mr. Winkler and Mr. Orlinsky. And just to reconfirm, following up on Mr. Kildie's question, this is not a durational financing. This is a one-time stipend, correct?
This is correct, sir.
Okay. I'm, I'm, let's just go back through the math. Let's say that you have a facility with 20 children. And I multiply that by 66. My math, without my calculator, is $1,320. Is that the amount that the facility would receive?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Conversely, if there were only eight children and that was, you multiply that by $66, it would be, it would be, that, that comes out to $528, but the minimum amount would be 924.
Yes.
Okay. I think this question is for Mr. Orlinsky primarily. And, and again, thank you for being with us. And again, thanks to staff for, for coming up with this program. My understanding is that you're unable to release the names of facilities who serve, is it less than eight or eight or less?
It's eight, the licensing is usually set. So it's, it's eight children for a small family childcare.
All right. And is that, is that a state regulation?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so even if we were to specify as a council that we would not release these monies unless the facilities could be named, you, you couldn't do that, is what I'm understanding, right?
It's a very good question. I'd have to go back and check to see, because this is a separate funding. It's a separate type of funding and, and effort. And I'd have to see if it would apply as far as our ability to release information without consent.
Okay. Members of the council, the reason I ask this is from a transparency standpoint. And I, and I want to make sure that we, if we approve this, we know where we're going. I don't want to run into the same, Mrs. Craven, I'll recognize you in a minute. I don't want to run into the same problems that the county and VCCF are having right now. But Mr. Orlinsky, let me continue with my questions to you. You, there was one category of facilities, less than eight. And then there was a category of large, which had 14 or centers. How are those different?
It's, it's part of the regulation. That's already written in that, in the code that licensed family childcare, these are family child cares run out of their homes that have a licensed capacity of 14 and then licensed center base. They are, their information is allowed to be made public.
So what happens if you have between nine to 13?
It's based on the licensed capacity. So in family childcare home, there is no variable. It's, you're either an eight, you're licensed for eight, or you're licensed for 14. In a licensed center, it can be a bit variable depending on the size of a facility.
Oh, I see, okay. So if you're licensed for 14, you could have 12.
Exactly.
But you could have all the way up to 14.
Exactly.
Okay, that, that solves, that solves that. So in order, and one more question then to Mr. Orlinsky. So then in order to check whether or not we could require as a condition of receipt of these monies that a facility with eight or less children have its name divulged, you'd have to go back and look at whether or not that's consistent with state regulations?
I think it's more of looking at if there's anything blocking your ability to say, hey, we received a consent. Therefore, if we have a consent, we can release the information. That's the only piece. Typically, when you have a consent by that organization or person, then that's usually good enough, from what I understand. But I'm not a lawyer. So I would have to go back and check with public or licensing just to verify that this would be, since it's a separate thing, that this will apply.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Orlinsky. Do we have, before I go to public comments or asking for public comments, do we have any questions from other council members? Mrs. Craven, did you have a follow-up question?
No, he answered it. If you're going back to that one, I wanted to make sure I understood. Because it appeared to me he hadn't answered the question you asked, but then clarified.
Right, okay. Then at this point then, absent any further questions from council members, I'm going to go to public comments and ask if there are any comments from members of the public. I do have that screen up in front of me. I do not show any hands raised. Madam Clerk, can you confirm for me that there are no hands raised at this point?
That's correct.
And are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this? All right, seeing none. I almost said hearing none, but seeing none. Mr. Kildie, hold on a second. We're going to go back now to council. And we're going to go ahead for discussion by council of this item. And I think, Mr. Kildie, you managed to have your hand raised first.
I do. Thank you, Your Honor. This is for, just a question, I believe, from Mr. Orlinsky, if I, if I may.
Sure.
Are you familiar with a program such as this?
Yes. It's modeled after a state program called the Cleaning Supplies for Childcare Providers, in which we have distributed out a similar type of funding to providers all across Ventura County based on their licensed capacity.
Okay, thank you. That was just my follow-up, Your Honor.
Susan, you're up, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So first of all, I want to thank the staff. I really want to thank Mr. Mulchay, because it was him that brought this up, and it's what I really appreciate about having him on the council. He thinks about things that really impact the community, and I'm really glad he brought this up. So thank you, and thank you, staff, because I think that what you came up with is thoughtful. I think it's equitable, and I think it's sensitive to our businesses and maintaining, not competing with businesses, and sensitive to other industries. And I just think this is good for our community on so many levels, because that childcare piece is so crucial for so many families. I'm completely in favor of this. What I don't want to happen, though, is I don't want this to get delayed anymore, figuring out this disclosure thing. You know, I know we had wanted to try to have a special meeting and get this done sooner. I don't want to have to bring this back in two more weeks. So I hope we can figure something out with this disclosure, that we can get this going. I just don't want it to be delayed, so that's my concern, and I just wanted to express that to the council.
Thank you. Mrs. Craven.
Yes, I agree. I agree with the 924 minimum, I agree with the 5,000 cap, and I prefer to have the names, well, let me start at the beginning. All of the larger ones, whose names can be made public, we need to make them public. If there's a law that says we cannot even ask the others to allow their names to be made public, then I'm willing to go forward with it that way, but I prefer for them to try to find out if they can do it quickly, if we can ask them, if they would allow their names to be made public. I don't care about any of the other information, I don't care about the financial disclosures being made public, I don't care about their addresses. I think one of the things that they don't want is, these are in people's private homes, these small ones, and they don't want maybe their addresses made public. If we could just provide the name, I'd be happy with that, but I can also go without that category being made public.
We'd like to go next. Tag goes to the runner, Mr. Mulchay, followed by Mr. Kildie.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the kind words from the Vice Mayor, thank you. Yeah, I can support this wholeheartedly. I think this is much better than what we were discussing a few weeks ago at the last meeting. I do agree with, in regards to transparency, we should be as transparent as we possibly can, but not to the extent that this holds up the program and holds up the implementation. To the extent which we can, within the law, within state regulations or whatnot, provide transparency, then I think we should absolutely pursue and do that. I do like this. This is much better, as opposed to what we were considering last meeting, which was, and the Vice Mayor had already talked about that, was more of a direct competition with existing childcare facilities in Camarillo. And we don't need, no one needs any more competition right now. What we need is, we need to help facilitate and support the ones that exist, the ones that are open, and are the ones that are trying to open. I think this does it. I think it lends support to an industry that I think a lot of Camarillo residents rely on and depend on, and yeah, I think this is good.
Thank you, Mr. Mulchay. Mr. Kildie?
Yeah, I also appreciate it being brought back. I appreciate staff's efforts. This is needed in so many different ways, and I think, not the least to wish with the families, that hopefully, as this COVID starts to hopefully go in a better direction than what it has, we hope, we hope, that the demand for this will be really, really great. I do support the 924 and the cap of 5,000 as well. Hopefully, the disclosure can be dealt with really rapidly and get this going as quickly as we can. So again, I support this, and I'm really looking forward to its implementation. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mr. Kildie. For my part, I think this is a good alternative. I think it's better than what we had originally looked at, and I want to applaud Mr. Mulchay and staff for their thoughts, leading to where we are now. The operational criteria and the staff report are fine with me. I'm okay with the 924, I'm okay with the 5,000. I would like, though, to have this question answered, because from a transparency standpoint, I think it would be helpful. Vice Mayor Santangelo, I think my, back to your comment, would incorporate this item in next week, we have a special meeting next week, on budget, if I'm not mistaken, and we wouldn't have to wait two weeks to bring this back. We could bring this back next week, unless the city manager tells us that that's not possible. I think we'd only have to wait one more week. I would like to do that, just so we could have an answer to that question. So that would be my thought. Mr. Ramirez, we have any issues? If the council were to decide to defer this to the 21st of this month, in one week, would that present any problem from staff's standpoint?
No.
Okay. My suggestion to the council would be, then, that we defer this item until the 21st, and then we can decide on it a week from tonight, with that question answered. That would be my thought, but I think it's appropriate to do my, okay. I think I saw Mr. Mulchay's hand first, followed by Ms. Santangelo, and then Mrs. Craven. So, Mr. Mulchay, you go first.
Could we, on that, on what you brought up, Mr. Mayor, could we not vote or put forth a motion with a condition, pretty much saying, provided that there is no issue, that staff goes back, talks with CDR, and after some quick investigation, they conclude that there is a way to provide full transparency of all the recipients, that they may proceed, but in the event not, that they bring back and tell us the following week, and for us to then address and consider whether or not we need any kind of adjustments?
I guess the difficulty would be phrasing a motion that would encapsulate that in a way that staff would feel comfortable moving forward with. So we may, Mr. Mulchay, we may need to get staff to react to that form of motion, but I understand where you're going. Would it be okay with you if I called on Ms. Santangelo and Mrs. Craven, then first and we'll come back, we'll circle back? All right. Vice Mayor Santangelo is next up.
I think what we need to decide, and what might help us further direction, is whether we would move ahead if we cannot disclose the names of the smaller childcare centers. If we decide that we want to go ahead regardless, then we should go ahead regardless, and the direction should be that if we can disclose, we will, and if we can't, because of legal restrictions, then we won't. But, you know, I mean, I think we need to decide right now whether not disclosing those names is going to stop this program. If it's not, then we should move ahead. That's my feeling.
Mrs. Craven?
I was going to say pretty much the same thing, except I was going to add that if laws and regulations forbid it, I'm still willing to give these people the money. If what we're really interested in is helping small childcare centers, or helping childcare centers, so that parents can get back to work, keeping the childcare centers open, then I think I am willing to work within the existing state law and existing state regulations. We've already delayed this three weeks. Delaying another week before a decision is going to delay this program, it's going to be January, February, before we get going on it. So I would like to get it moving as soon as possible. When we delayed it three weeks, we thought it was going to be one week, or maybe two weeks, and it ended up being till the next council meeting, and that's a long time, and another one is a whole month, so I'm really not interested in delaying even another week.
Mr. Mulchay?
Circle back, ditto. I agree with both what Ms. Santangelo and Mrs. Craven said.
Well, then, I think.
Yeah, I agree too, but I also want to make sure that we're in compliance with the law here. I think that's an important caveat as well, but I totally support the program, and want to get it implemented just as soon as we can, and I think we had a direct staff to get these questions asked as quickly as we can and implement it in as timely manner as we can.
Well, I think at this point, I was actually going to, Mr. Mulchay, circle back to you for the form of a motion, that we could then consider. Or anybody else.
I have one.
Somebody else wants to do the motion too, I'm sorry, but I deferred to you, Mr. Mulchay, on this, since I was going to circle back to you, but Mrs. Craven may have a motion as well.
And Mrs. Craven can add to this or amend it, as she sees fit. I think I'd probably agree with whatever she put forward anyway, with what she already said, but I would more or less approve the suggested action with maybe the comment that if there are any transparency issues, staff should simply alert us to the answers. But I agree that if there is a small issue with some of the small childcare providers, as long as we're abiding, and it's limited by state law and or regulations, then it shouldn't stop us from doing this good deed. So I would, I pretty much suggest the suggested action with a small amendment that staff bring back to council as an informational item, or alert council as to whether or not what the answer is when it comes to transparency in regard to small childcare providers.
Okay, so it's not, I'm sorry.
Second that.
Correct?
I'll second that.
All right, that was in the form of a motion by Councilmember Mulchay. It's seconded by Mrs. Craven. And just a question, then, the intent is that it's not a conditional motion in any sense, it's simply a motion with a request for information back to the council on how that question has been answered, right, Mr. Mulchay?
That is correct, that's the intent of what I said, yeah.
And Mrs. Craven, do you agree with that?
Actually, I guess I would have added that our preference is to have the names of the childcare providers disclosed, unless state law or regulation forbids it.
I will amend my motion to include that.
Can I add one small thing?
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor, go ahead, please.
Sorry, just that it also be publicly announced, not just, I mean, so that everybody in the community knows what was decided, what the outcome is about the disclosure.
Yeah, that's in my request, that staff have to bring it back to council at the next meeting. We make sure it's public via the meeting.
All right, and that would be the next meeting, the meeting next week?
Yeah, I don't see why they couldn't get an answer by then.
Okay, all right. As to the form of the motion, Mr. Ramirez, is staff clear on the form of the motion, and what the motion entails? I just want to be sure.
Yes, that is clear.
Okay, all right, very well. Then let's move to a vote on the motion. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Craven?
Yes.
Councilmember Kildie?
Yes.
Councilmember Mulchay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Santangelo?
Yes.
Mayor Tremblay?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously.
All right, so that brings us, that finishes that item on the agenda, and we now move to item six, new business oral communications. Mr. Ramirez, you're first up. Anything from you this evening?
Just one thing, Mayor, and thank you, members of the city council. I'm reporting back for an item that was raised three weeks ago at our last council meeting by Councilmember Mulchay, about the possibility of working with the Park District to place a senior center at the 24-hour fitness. Staff has done a great deal of research on that, spoken to the property owner, the broker of the property, as well as the Park District, and also met with the ad hoc liaison committee with the Park District, and then consumed Mayor Tremblay and Councilmember Craven. First and foremost, I can report back that we've been informed by the property owner, broker, that they're in final negotiations with a retail tenant at that site, and they also have three backup offers to potentially prospective tenants of that location. So, not that it makes it completely moot, but that is kind of the current status of that location and tenant space. The committee did meet and discussed the matter. They were not, and please, don't let me put words in your mouth, but they were not in favor of the concept for a couple reasons. Number one is that the Park District has not expressed an interest. I actively sought that interest from their staff, and they never, you know, got back to me in the sense of having an interest. They said they would if there was, they didn't, and so I take that as not interest from the site. Also, the lack of ownership of that location in that tenant space. It is a market rate lease. We understand that cost, that lease per square foot cost is in the mid $20 range, $25 a gever cake, so relatively expensive, a lease space there. And then also, you know, the senior center would not technically be the highest and best use of that location, retail is in that center. So, you know, based on that, as well as some concerns over parking, and kind of the traffic flow on that site, also cause some concern about that use as a senior center, and the safety of seniors, as well as discussed. So I'll leave it at that. If the committee wants to weigh in and opine as well, that's all I have.
Are there any comments or questions by council members? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Does that conclude your report?
It does.
All right, thank you. Mr. Perrick, do you have anything to report to us this evening?
I have no items tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Perrick. All right, we'll go to city council, who'd like to be first up? Susan raised her hand first. Vice Mayor Santangelo?
Thank you. Let's see, for meetings attended, I, via telephone, was at the CPA board meeting on October 1st. I just had a couple of quick things. You know, Ventura County is doing really, really well with COVID. Our case rate is still in red at 5.2. If we can get down to lesson four, we move into orange. Our positivity rate is in orange, and the one thing I really wanted to mention and just talk about how remarkable it is, is that our health equity metric is in the orange by a lot. It needs to be less than 5% to be in orange, we're 3.8. And what that health equity metric is measuring is how well our county is taking care of our most vulnerable populations, our lowest socioeconomic. And, you know, just as an example, Latinos in California make up 40% of our population, but they're 61% of those infected with COVID, and they're 50% of the deaths. So that's that disparity, and so the idea of the health equity metric is to make sure that counties are really paying attention to those vulnerable populations. And I do, I think it's pretty remarkable that Ventura County is doing so well, and I just think that's worth mentioning and worth noting. Even though we're doing well, there are a lot of places in this country that are not. That numbers are rising dramatically, and so please remember that this is not over. It is really easy to get complacent, we have more things opening up, and that's fantastic. I mean, it's great for business, it's great for our mental health, but please, everybody, remember to keep washing your hands, keep wearing your masks, keep socially distancing. It's so important so that we can keep our economy going and keep our businesses open, so please, please do your part. Just a quick reminder to vote, I'm sure you're hearing that from everybody, and make sure you're using, if you choose to use the official ballot drop boxes, make sure you're using the official ballot drop boxes, not ones that have been placed out. There have been reports that in Ventura County, that there are other There have been reports that in Ventura County that there are other nonofficial drop boxes out there. There's one right outside City Hall, so that's available for you. And then I did, Mr. Ramirez, I asked you about this, obviously offline, but I'm wondering if you could just give us an update on the grant program? Because, you know, we did talk about that at the last meeting, and it's not back yet. So, if you could give us a little status, because I've been asked by a lot of members of the community what's happening with it, I would appreciate that.
Absolutely. We will be bringing that item back in two weeks on the 28th. The county of Ventura deferred their item on this matter to the 20th, which they have committed to discuss and to make a decision as to the agreement with the CCF. And I believe that's the information that the council was seeking prior to making a final decision on our program. And so, we will know the answer to that before the agenda goes out for our next meeting when we'll consider it. I plan to bring it back regardless of what happens at that meeting for no other reason to give you a chance to discuss it further, but that is the current status.
Thank you. I'm sure, hope they resolve it. Appreciate the update, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Who'd like to go next? Mrs. Craven.
Yes, I'm going to start out with a compliment to our staff. In the business my husband and I are in, we deal with roofers a lot, and we were talking to a roofer the other day about a problem, and he said, and I'm going to quote what he said, he said, "Camarillo is great. You walk in, you can ju, in fact, you can get into City Hall, you don't need an appointment to get into City Hall. You walk in and you walk out with a permit." Now, he's a roofer. He said, "You can't get into Oxnard City Hall. He's been waiting for three weeks to get through the red tape to get in and to get a permit." In Ventura, he's had multiple requests in for weeks, and he's still waiting for an answer. Camarillo is the best city in the county to deal with, and we deal with quite a few tradespeople, and they're all saying that. And so, I'd like to congratulate our staff because I think they're doing a good job. Meetings I attended, I attended the morning after our last council meeting, I attended an Association of Water Agencies meeting by Zoom, and they talked about the 100 projects that will solve our water supply problems. I'm not sure all those projects are going to come to fruition. I went previously to a similar program put on by United Water District, and so, this is Awaz's answer, this was, I'm sorry, I didn't say who was presenting that. This is Callejas's answer to that one. And so, if everybody's projects come to fruition, we're going to have a lot of water in this county. I'm just not hopeful it's all going to pan out, but I could be sadly mistaken. And they're talking with a 50-year window, so I probably won't be around to know if they all come to fruition or not. But for the rest of you, I hope their dreams come true. I also attended a meeting of the Contract Cities State Legislative Committee, and I, based on a discussion there, I got myself put onto a second committee, a subcommittee on housing, where they said they were going to develop a city-driven housing bill that would be introduced by Senator Ben Allen in January, and it would counter, contradict or go counter to the one that Senator Weiner's planning to reintroduce. So, that subcommittee also met, and I attended that meeting, and I have to tell you, I'm going to stick with the committee unless they change their proposal. The committee was not developed to, to develop a proposal or a bill. It was being asked to rubber stamp a bill that was developed by some of the beach cities and cities like Rolling Hills of the state, Palis Verdes, and cities like that. I think it's a crazy proposal, but the proposal is to develop something for housing similar to the cap and trade bill for air quality. They would not accept my proposal or my idea that we opt in. I met with staff about this and found out what our city could live with from staff perspective. They would not want anybody to be able to opt out. It wouldn't be an opt-in thing, it'd be mandatory. There'd be a percentage of every housing unit built, the value, go into a trust fund that would be managed by the COG. And they're saying it would be the subregional COG. Their in-writing proposal was the regional COG, and I just flat out told them, I didn't want our money being managed by SCAG for housing. I asked several questions, like what happens to your RENA numbers? You put all this money into a trust fund that's operated by some other government agency like the COG, how do you know you're going to get any money back? These cities don't want any money back. What they want to be able to do is allow other cities to build the housing, but they want credit for their RENA numbers when the other cities build the housing. As I said, personally, I think it's a crazy idea. If other council members have an idea that you think it's worth us discussing and opting into, then talk to the city manager and have him put it on an agenda, and we can talk about it. The timeline for this is that Senator Allen needs the bill as they would have it written by Thanksgiving, so we're meeting again, I think, on the 22nd, but that date isn't in concrete yet, and we will meet three more times. So, anyway, that's on that. And I also have a comment on something that was in, I think it was yesterday's paper. I had brought this up, I think it was in May, when the governor announced that he was going to be closing the youth prisons. We were busy with COVID stuff and other things and budget, especially in May. Budget signed the bill detailing the closure of the youth authority. I just want to say that I'm sorry to see that facility go. I know that his reason is there's people in Sacramento who feel that the young people need to be nearer their families, the children who are out here are not close enough to their families, they're 55, 60 miles away, or sometime, in some cases, farther. We have all of the females who are under the age of 18 incarcerated in the state who are the females out here. This is the only place right now that takes young women. We also, last time I was out there was about two years ago, but the males who are out there were some of the worst of the worst. They had committed some pretty big crimes, even though they were juveniles, they were out there. I don't know how important it is to be close to their families, a lot of them. I spent a lot of time going out there and talking to the directors and staff and looking at their programs through the years. They have some very, very good programs that educate these young people, and they don't only provide them with a high school education, they all get a junior college education if they're in there long enough. That's one of the requirements. That's not an opt-in and opt-out thing. You're required to go to school. But they also have other programs. They have a very good pet grooming program, they have woodworking programs, they have all kinds of programs that retrain these kids and get them prepared for something they can do when they get out of youth prison. And some of the young men who've committed more severe crime, felonies, murder and things like that, they can stay out there until they're 25 because they entered as a youth. Anyway, it's a done deal. I just want to say this council had fought for years. Every time Gloria Molina or somebody would come up with an idea to transfer the young people into men's prisons, the young girls into women's prison in Corona, we thought it was a bad idea because we didn't think that these girls used to be 12 and up, but last time I was out there, there was an eight-year-old girl. And I still think it's a bad idea for them to go to adult prisons. That's not part of the governor's proposal. It's the first time a proposal has come through. They're going to go to the youth jails that the counties have set up in the last few years, youth correctional facilities, excuse me. I have a habit of calling things by the wrong name, but, and it isn't no longer a prison, it's no longer a youth authority, but I guess you know what I'm talking about out on Wright Road. Anyway, I'm sorry to see it go because I think it did provide good education and, in some cases, good retraining for the kids. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mrs. Craven. Who would like to go next? Mr. Kildee.
First of all, I want to echo what Ms. Craven has said. I've been out there, you know, through the years several times, and last time I was out there, it's a real unique program of coding, which is a real buzzword in the computer field now, and some of them were able to get a certificate and start off with a job paying a whole lot of money. And they were doing some really good things as well out there. I did attend a Streets and Transportation Subcommittee meeting with Mayor Tremblay as well. Also, I had a conversation with Dave Klotzel, and apparently the last Slurry Seal Program we had, there was some potential for some questions on that. I just want to make sure that it doesn't fall between the cracks that we're looking in to this and making sure that the issues can be rectified if possible. Also, I had some people wondering if they could get a hard copy of the EIR for Camp Springs, and if they can, where? So, maybe staff, if they could come up with an answer to that as well. With that, we are, obviously, as we stated earlier, we've gone from purple to red, and let's hope that we can keep these numbers going in a positive direction here. I've noticed a little bit of uptake in the confidence level of people, but we need to make sure that we do it very safely and we don't let our guard down here and keep, you know, moving Ventura County forward here to the best of our ability. So, with that, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kildee. Mr. Moshe?
For meetings attended, Friday, September 25th, I attended Economic Development Committee. Some quick little notes on that. It's actually nice to see, even with COVID and the challenges it presents, and it's not to say that a lot of people have been impacted severely. A lot of businesses in Camarillo seem to be, or I should say, certain economic activities in Camarillo seem to be rather resilient and trying to buffer the national trend. Planning permits are equal, year-to-date and year-over-year, are equal, at the same level, the city is seeing the same level. Building and safety permitting activity is up 20% over this time last year, which is good. At the, I do want to compliment the staff. At the end of August, 46 businesses had received the temporary zone clearance that we had set forward, and I think that number is either approaching or has already surpassed 60 by this time. So, I just want to commend staff and everyone else that's helped make that happen. Speaking to a few business owners that I have, I will echo a little bit of what Charlotte mentioned earlier in that I'm hearing good, positive things out of business owners as well as to how quick staff are able to turn around things when it comes to either permitting or business needs, or obviously this temporary zone clearance for, you know, restaurants and gyms and whatnot, we're trying to get outside. Obviously, in going to the next new tier now, where things are, albeit slowly, moving back indoors, I think this will probably be with us again for quite a while. I also, on Monday, October 12th, I met with staff in regards to a microgrid feasibility study. Aside from that, I do want to echo what the Vice Mayor said. Please vote, go out, vote. It's very important. My wife and I use the drop box here outside City Hall. It is, I've gotten several questions from residents, is it safe? Is it monitored? That box is a beast. No one's getting inside of it. It is emptied daily, if not multiple times a day. It's right outside of City Hall. It's in clear, visible sight. It is absolutely safe to use. I encourage people, for those voting by mail, please use it. For the ones who want to wait and vote in person, that's your prerogative, by all means, do that then. Most important thing is those, is to vote. I take pride in voting every two years, every opportunity I can, I will absolutely vote. It's the time where our voice can be heard. I also want to extend thanks to the Ventura County Sheriff's Department, the intersection on Adolfo and Mission Oaks, it's actually right down the street from where I live. There had been several accidents that had occurred there more recently. I was communicating with a resident who lives on that corner, fairly concerned about accidents, speeding, and the like, reached out to staff and the commander as well, and I appreciate the quick turnaround, the kind of information they were able to give to me in order for me to get to the resident about citations issued in that general area, nor accidents incurred in that area over a period of time, the reasons for those accidents and the like. The resident seemed rather impressed with how quickly the sheriff was able to get a, was it a speed trailer out there on Mission Oaks? And I've also, I've seen it, and I've had a few people comment, my wife has commented about how she seems stepped up patrols around Mission Oaks and Adolfo as well. The police, when they have, they're not out answering calls and whatnot, they're chilling by the Adolfo Camera High School, looking for speeders and whatnot, and just doing a little bit of enforcement around that, remind people to slow down and be safe. And so, I appreciate that. This resident has been very communicative to me and also wants to extend his appreciation for the really quick action and response. So, I just want to say thank you. And with that, turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Moshe. Let me go ahead and start with meetings attended. On September 25th, I had a MetroLink Board of Directors meeting. On October 2, a Ventura County Transportation Commission Board meeting. On October 5, a Policy Committee meeting with Mrs. Craven, and also a meeting with the city staff regarding the microgrid study. On October 6th, another meeting with city staff regarding, I guess, a precursor for tonight's City Council Chambers project. On October 9th, a MetroLink Board of Directors Contract Operation Maintenance Committee meeting. And on October 12th, with Mr. Kildee, a Streets and Transportation Committee meeting with some things that will be coming back to council in the near future. And also, the same day, a tour of the Freeman, of United Water Conservation District's Freeman diversion on the Santa Clara River. Fortunately, since I was their general counsel for so many years, I've been up there many, many times, but I always learn something new. And they're currently diverting, as you all know, diverting water in a very large conservation release from Lake Piru, and it's a very, very good thing in terms of aquifer replenishment, particularly down lower here on the Oxnard Fore Bay and the Oxnard Plain. Since I'm your delegate this year to the League of Cities General Assembly, I wanted to report to you, you all recall that, you know, the League of Cities had its virtual meeting on 7th, 8th, and 9th. You may have gone to any one of the presentations, but they had their General Assembly on the 9th, and you recall that we talked about a resolution here a couple of weeks ago, calling for an amendment to Section 230 of the Federal Communications Decency Act of 1996 to require social media companies to remove materials. uh to require social media companies to remove materials uh which promote criminal activities. And that was the City of Cerritos uh resolution. Uh, and you instructed me, and I think we agreed on an unanimous basis that we would support that resolution. I want you to know that that resolution uh did pass. Uh, but on a, uh, there was, there was not a quorum of the General Assembly. Uh, it took about an hour and a half plus of debate. Uh, there was very spirited debate on it. Uh, the vote, final vote on that were yes, 122, no, 85, and abstain 11. Uh, the folks who uh were not in support of that resolution um asserted that it ran afoul of First Amendment speech rights uh and provides pretenses for law enforcement to get involved uh and that the definition of criminal activities was unconstitutionally vague. Um, the pushback response by those cities who were reporting and saying the resolution may not be perfect, but it sends a message from the League of Cities that Congress needs to act. Uh, since there is not a, um, there was not a quorum, it's an advisory vote only for the League of Cities Board of Directors. So all of that, and it ended up being an advisory vote after an hour and a half plus. Um, I want to echo what uh Mrs. Craven and Mr. Mulchay said. Um, I keep getting compliments as well uh to city staff. And just for example, a, a restaurant owner uh extended their outdoor area by 15 feet or so. It took them one half hour to get the permit done through Public Works and Community Development, et cetera. Uh, and so I, I think it's uh, I think our staff is doing a wonderful job. I want to echo what I think the vice mayor uh and Mr. Mulchay uh said, please vote. Uh, my wife and I actually used the City Hall Dropbox, the official ballot box here at City Hall uh yesterday. Uh, and as Mr. Mulchay said, and I'll say it even more strongly, that ballot box is not moving anywhere. Uh, my joke is that you could get an Ost crane and that is not going to move from that spot. So people can certainly feel secure um with, with that location uh as, as an official Dropbox. And I would encourage people to use that or other official drop boxes uh that are in the area. Of course, we also have the polling centers, as everyone knows. That'll be open between October 31 to November 3. And then we also have the, the mails as well, US Mail. Um, I want to talk a little bit about COVID-19. And Ms. Tangiello, I'm not sure if you were on the weekly officials, elected officials call this morning, uh, but you may have been, and, and thank you for citing some of the statistics on how well Ventura County is doing. Um, I do want to just talk about a couple of other things. On the business uh grant program, we talked about this a little bit earlier. The county is still pursuing a resolution on the business identification issue on the Board of Supervisors and the VCCF are continuing to try to work that out. On next Tuesday uh at the Board of Supervisors, my understanding uh through Mr. Powers was that, is that uh there will be $5.5 million in Federal Care Act money going to the Board of Supervisors for dispersment to all of the city partners in the county. And my understanding is that would result in about $469,000 to the City of Camrio in Federal Cares Act money, which is a significant amount of money. Um, and so I'm very happy to, to hear that. On the health side, um, our, our numbers are good, but we need to continue our efforts and our vigilance, especially with the holidays coming up. And I would just echo what Ms. Tangiello had to say. Our hospital numbers right now, that Dr. Levin in particular focuses on, uh, we have now 27 COVID-related in the hospital and eight in ICU. Uh, no new deaths today. And in fact, our hospital, the hospital census has actually decreased a little bit too. I think it's been run between 31 to 33 the last several days, and it's now down to, down to 27. Um, I, I think I, it's important enough, I don't want to repeat it, and I apologize for being repetitive, but what Ms. Tangiello said. And that is, I'll just say it a little differently. Please, please continue to follow the directives of the public health officer uh and the state, uh, including masking up and social distancing and hand washing. Uh, it's extremely important. We're doing well, but now we're going into the winter months and we have a lot of other states out there that are not doing as well as we are. But uh, we're, it's, I, I would say it's, it's fragile in that sense. And we have a ways to go uh in this pandemic before we can see end to the pandemic. Uh, with that, that concludes my council comments for the evening. So I note that it's 6:35 right now, according to my clock. And we will now recess unless, is there anything else from any council members? All right, we're going to go ahead.
Get your flu shots.
Thank you, Mrs. Craven, for that reminder. If you haven't already had your flu shots, and Ms. Tangiello, you have your hand raised as well.
Go Dodgers.
Dodgers, okay. So flu shots and Dodgers, not necessarily in that order, but we'll see. Um, any other comments from council members? All right, at now being 6:35 PM, we're going to go ahead and recess. We will reconvene at 7:30 PM. Thank you. All right, I have 7:30 PM on my, uh, on my clock. We're going to go ahead and reconvene uh this meeting of the Camrio City Council. Let the record reflect that all five council members are present this evening. Um, this is the time under item number seven for public comments on non-agenda items. Uh, I am looking at the list of attendees and I do not see any hands raised. Uh, Madam Clerk, um, do you see any hands raised for folks who want to make any public comment on non-agenda items?
I do not, but I would just ask if any member of the public did want to speak, they should raise their hand.
Well, then let me follow your lead. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on items not on the tonight's agenda? Please raise your hand. All right, Madam Clerk, I do not see any. Correct?
Correct, I would move forward.
Okay, I just double checking with you. So, okay, very good. Uh, then we're going to go proceed then to item 8A, uh, departmental, uh, which is the update on the housing element uh workshop. And I believe we're going to hear first from Mr. Baca.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Trembley and City Council. I would also like to take a moment to thank our planning commissioners who are on Zoom with us this evening and are participating as community members. In coordination with the city council's oversight and input, staff had entered into a contract with Rincon Consultants and Veronica Tam and Associates back in April of this year. And we immediately began our work, starting to um evaluate uh the background and preparation for updating our housing element. So in August, on August 27th, we actually held our first public workshop with the community on the housing element update. This evening, Mr. Greg Martin with Rincon Consultants will be providing an overview of the housing element update. This will be including information on our first workshop and the draft land inventory that's been um prepared to a draft at this point. And Mr. Martin will eventually conclude by going over the upcoming next steps in the update process. After the presentation, Mr. Martin and then along with the community development staff will be available to help answer any questions. So with that, I will introduce Mr. Martin, who will be providing tonight's presentation.
Hello. Thank you, Joe. Hopefully you can all see me and hear me.
Yeah, Mr. Martin, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, yeah, and at this time I'll uh share my screen and um uh give you the, our presentation on the housing element update and process so far. Um, I'll be going through these slides pretty quickly in the interest of time. And you're already familiar, probably already quite familiar with this process. Um, but I'll go ahead and start that now. And I'll, and there will be, you know, obviously uh time for questions and answers at the end of the presentation, if you'd like. So. Okay, hopefully you can all, you all see my uh this uh cover sheet for the PowerPoint presentation now.
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. Um, so continue. Um, tonight we will provide a broader view of the housing element update process and cities' housing needs. I discuss the potential land inventory uh and the proposed schedule for the project, including uh key milestones, uh opportunities for public involvement and next steps. So uh, the goals of the housing element are partly defined in state law, um, but also partly generally defined by tradition and the community and the city. Um, the housing element is to plan for the provision of a variety of housing types for all income groups in the community, assist in the development of lower moderate income housing, remove constraints to housing development, um, conserve and improve existing affordable housing and promote fair and equal housing opportunities. So the actual uh legal requirements uh in housing element law are many. Uh, it's uh the most regulated element of a city's uh general plan. Uh, and under state law, um, it must uh do many of those things I just listed in the previous slide, but uh analyze communities' current and future housing needs. Um, and, and if I identify adequate sites for housing for all segments of the community, um, be updated at least once every eight years, which is another um requirement that uh other general plan elements are not subject to. Um, but it must be consistent with all the other elements of the city's general plan. And it must include goals, policies and quantified objectives uh and scheduled programs for the preservation, improvement and development of housing. So, uh, and there are also numerous new laws uh in policy direction from Sacramento uh recent, that are recent uh that are generally focused on facilitating the production of new housing uh in recognition of the statewide lack of affordable housing, um, and just lack of housing in general. Um, and these focus on removing constraints for development of housing, increasing capacity for housing development and expanding has, uh, housing options for a variety of housing types, including, for example, accessory dwelling units, uh, housing for persons with disabilities or housing for the homeless. And that, what are some of the potential consequences of non-compliance with the housing element law? Uh, well, is there a risk of litigation? Um, and we have on this slide, uh, some recent examples, uh, ineligible ability for state grants. And those have traditionally uh been housing fund grants, but also it's being considered more recently to uh perhaps even restrict uh access to grants for other purposes such as infrastructure or transportation funds. And um also the city may be uh subject to buy right, over the counter development um for uh certain qualifying, qualifying housing projects if uh it's in, in non-compliance with housing element law. So, um, the city's housing stock um is preliminary, preliminary, primarily, excuse me, uh primarily single family, and that's shown here as uh one unit. Uh, so about 75% uh single family. Uh, median home sales price uh is about uh $600,000. And you can see that's about in the middle compared to some other nearby communities uh in Ventura County. Uh, and so uh switching gears a little bit now to the idea of housing cost burden uh as it relates to affordability. Um, a household paying more than 30% of its income on housing, or their income on housing, is considered to be cost burdened and the, meaning that they all have maybe inadequate uh resources to pay for other needs. Um, but, and another takeaway from this slide, um, this graph here is you can see that the percentage of uh cost burden renters um is higher uh than cost burden owners. So affordable rental housing is important partly for that reason. And how is this, how are these income categories determined? Uh, well, for housing policy and program purposes, the state establishes five income groups. They're listed here, everything from extremely low income, which is less than 30% of area median income, up to uh above moderate income, uh, which is above 120% of area median income. Those are the official categories for housing elements. Uh, and there are some other uh categories, unofficial or uh categories such as workforce housing, which is not legally defined, but uh typically includes households up to 150% of area median income who uh uh may be able to afford housing without assistance, but maybe more on the market for a different unit type like townhomes, condos uh and apartments rather than detached, single family housing. And uh, the county, Ventura County's um AMI or area median income for a four-person household is about $98,000. You can see that number bolded in this uh graphic here. So the AMI is uh determined locally, at least at the county level. And uh, so moving on to the uh RENA rationale and methodology. RENA is the Regional Housing Needs Assessment Process. Uh, and this was developed because California's population continues to grow and, you know, with occasional uh lulls or uh occasional downturns. Um, historically, the state's population has continued to grow by about 500,000 people year, per year. So the state developed this process. Uh, they come up with a statewide number, but then they pass it down to uh more local levels. Um, in our case, uh, to uh SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments. Um, they're given a number by the state and then they are responsible for defining fair share allocation for uh their six county area and 191 cities in the Southern California region. So very a large area. So of course, that SCAG, that RENA number is very, very high, um, including LA County, very other very populated areas. Um, and the state is determined for this upcoming housing element cycle that the region, SCAG region, needs to accommodate about 1.3 million housing units between 2021 and 2029 to meet housing demand. So it's important to note that's an eight-year planning period. It's for the entire very large SCAG region. And uh, you'll see in the next slide, this basically illustrates how uh those numbers are passed from the state down to the regional planning agencies. Ventura County's portion of that is about 24,000 units, so relatively small portion of it. And Camrio's portion of that RENA allocation is 1,373 units, which is about uh 0.1% of the total SCAG allocation. And here's how that allocation is distributed among the different income categories that we were talking about earlier. Um, we can note here that um about 43% of uh city's allocation is in the below moderate income levels and the rest of it is above uh moderate income and above. Okay, so uh, the requirements uh in the RENA process uh under this process jurisdictions must plan for this allocation um for the RENA allocation and identify adequate sites for the development of that amount of housing within those different income categories. Um, with the, and show that has appropriate density and development standards, that it would at least be possible for the housing uh to be developed. Um, if uh vacant and underutilized sites are included in the city's land inventory, in other words, the uh list of all the uh sites, um, then they must be shown to have near-term development potential or at least development potential within the uh upcoming eight-year housing element cycle. And the city must demonstrate that its development processes and fees do not unduly constrain housing development. So that's a lot of the work we do in the uh housing element is to uh demonstrate those facts. Um, so what are the potential benefits of a diverse housing stock? Oh, well, can better accommodate demographic shifts, including a decreased number proportion of children, uh smaller household sizes, increased single-family households, uh increased seniors living alone. Um, and uh, communities diversifying their housing stock can allow seniors to stay in the community or stay in their homes, uh attract young families with children with affordable, more affordable housing options and provide housing options for young professionals. So Rincon and, and the city, um, and Veronica Tam and Associates have been working on developing uh the land inventory for this upcoming housing element update. Um, and we have identified sites, they're shown on this map. Uh, some of these uh are multiple parcels uh or groups of parcels, groups of sites. Um, but basically you can see it's in a few different areas, kind of scattered throughout the community and includes different kinds of sites, um, such as uh sites that are already entitled for housing development, uh, but have units that are not built on them yet. Uh, vacant sites, shown in green on this map, and redevelopment sites, um, simply meaning that uh there is already some development on the site, uh, but we can demonstrate that there is a potential for uh new development. Um, and justifying that with uh various uh factors. We can show HCD that it really has that development potential. Uh, and this is a, uh, is that land inventory shown in a tabular format? Uh, detailed tables for each of the site types shown in this table are attached to your agenda report. And you can see we do have, we have identified a somewhat of a surplus, or which is good. And the total number of units in this allocation. There is a little bit of a shortfall in some income categories. For example, you see moderate income, the sites we've identified are seventy-seven units short of the actual RENA allocation. But that shortfall can be made up by, in various ways, including accessory dwelling units, which we're not actually projected accessory dwelling unit development over the next eight years, which we're not allowed to show in this format. But also excess units in the very low and low-income category, categories we can count towards moderate income, because they would also be affordable to moderate income. So, on August twenty-seventh, we held a public workshop to present much of the same information to the public, and we received a few comments, and they were basically, I won't go through all this, but they're basically on the topics of why, why certain sites include were affordable, were designated for affordable or not affordable, which income categories they were put into. One commenter asked if there are plans for mixed-use development with housing above retail and office uses, and basically the answer to that is yes. Another asked why aren't more lower-income units already entitled? Another commenter asked about potential for reallocating general fund money towards affordable housing development. And another commenter just commented that the RENA, they thought the RENA did not include enough affordable housing units to address actual affordable housing need. But of course, the city doesn't determine the RENA, as we explained. And the full questions and answers are listed in your agenda report. So, what are our next steps in this process? Well, late this month, or in November, we plan to have a city council meeting to present the draft goals and policies to you and receive feedback on them. And then in December this year, planning to have another public workshop to present those draft goals and policies to the public and receive feedback from them. And then, a month after that, in January of next year, planning to have a joint city council and planning commission meeting to present feedback from that public workshop to city council and the planning commission, and present the revised draft goals and policies for feedback, revised if we've revised them in response to this public comment. March twenty-twenty-one, go to planning commission to take the draft housing element update document to the planning commission, to present it and receive feedback on it before sending it to HCD for preliminary sixty-day review. In April, do the same thing, bring it to city council and getting your feedback. And then in April, after the city council meeting, submit it to HCD. HCD will have a chance to review it and provide comments to the city, make requests or comments. So, allow a few months for that. And then in July, and for us to, the city to respond to that, make edits to the document if necessary. And then in July, we're planning to present the final housing element update to the planning commission for a recommendation to the city council. And in August, bring it to city council for adoption and direction to submit to HCD for final review and certification. And then, at that point, your work should be done, and the deadline for Camarillo to adopt the housing element is October twenty-twenty-one, so we have a little bit of, we're planning to bring it to city council for the adoption and direction to submit to HCD a couple of months ahead of time. And if the city did not meet the October twenty-twenty-one deadline, it could become ineligible for remaining on an eight-year housing element cycle, might have to revert to a four-year housing element cycle. So, we're allowing some extra time to make sure that doesn't happen. So, we have various ways for the public to provide input throughout the housing element update process. Those are listed here. So, staff recommendation is to receive and file the update on the housing element update, on the housing element update first workshop, and provide concurrence with the current draft twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-nine land inventory. So at this time, I'll hand it back to staff, and we'll be available to to answer questions if necessary. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mr. Vaca, are there any additional presentations by staff or consultants?
No.
All right, let me turn it over to council members. Do you have any questions for Mr. Martin or Mr. Vaca? Let's start. Mrs. Craven?
Well, I won't ask you to go back, but on the potential land use inventory sites, up in the northeast corner, there's a large green parcel. It's the largest green parcel, green being vacant sites. I don't know if this is a question for you, or staff could better answer it, but is that the Keshmeshian property?
Yes, yes, it is. We understand there may be some physical constraints associated with the full build out there.
Yeah, in the past, we've had a lot of discussion on that piece of property. There are earthquake faults running through it, and there's been a lot of arguments, and going up the state on the part of our engineering staff and trying to get a resolution on that. But I'm just wondering how, if, I'm sure that's in the above moderate income group, but its potential is less than would appear for the number of houses because of the number of, what am I trying to say? Faults and potential faults, you have to consider potential faults. So, could you talk a little bit about that? I mean, it doesn't, it isn't as big a piece of property as it looks.
Yes, so we recognize that there may be some physical constraints for development of that property. We're going to refine the numbers associated with using that for the land inventory to make sure it's more accurate as we refine the draft land inventory. But generally speaking, there is capacity for, I believe, two to three units for sure. And we'll be looking into those details a bit more as we refine the draft.
Yeah, it's nothing like it was originally planned, so thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Are there, Mr. Kildie?
Question, who can answer this, but it's, so my understanding that to meet these RENA numbers, that we potentially have enough in stock without resoning any new properties, is that correct?
Yes, so, based on the proposed draft land inventory that we presented, we did recognize that we have a surplus to achieve our RENA numbers, where we are only using vacant sites with very reasonable development capacities, as we just discussed. We are using entitled sites, and we did include the city projects on Arneal and Berry Street, both of which the city acquired for affordable housing, and entitlements are in process there. And then we also, in the blue, included the Camrio Commons. It still does have redevelopment, development capacity, along with the Ventura Boulevard corridor and Old Town, which does have additional capacity for some commercial mixed-use residential development.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor St. Angelo?
Joe, you just mentioned Ventura Boulevard and Camrio Commons. And I understand that it has capacity, but do we also have to factor in the probability, I mean, of it happening, or is that not, it's just there's space?
It's based just on the underlying zoning and what the zoning capacity would accommodate for development, not necessarily predicting whether or not it will actually be constructed.
Okay, thanks. That's all I had.
Other questions from council members? Joe, I had one for you. On Camrio Commons, I believe there was a specific plan previously prepared by the city. Was that year, was it two thousand and six?
Seven.
Two thousand and seven, okay, all right. And then a question for Mr. Martin. On Slide eighteen, under potential land inventory statistics, you mentioned that the shortfall is made up by excess units in the low and very low-income categories, but also by ADUs. For purposes of calculating this, do you take the, and I'm thinking about the pretty robust ADU legislation that occurred in twenty nineteen, to provide incentives for more ADUs. What period of time, how do you utilize the ADU information? Is that ADUs going in between twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-nine? Or how does that work for purposes of that specific shortfall calculation?
Right. Yeah, I think we've been consulting with the city about that, discussing that with the city and city staff. And our understanding is that they expect, based on historical trends, recent historical trends, that they're expecting about ten ADUs per year. That's about what they've been, the city has been averaging. So, we'll, that'll be listed in a little bit different place in the housing element, rather than the summary table I showed you. But that can help to address part of that shortfall. Units per year, about eight years, so about eighty units are the year planning grade, perhaps?
So, for, thanks for that. So for purposes of that, meeting that criteria, it's about ten ADUs, if I'm taking you correctly, it's about ten ADUs per annum. That's a different methodology than what the other criteria utilize. In that case for ADUs, it's what the city anticipates could be the level of ADU conversions as opposed to land that is zoned appropriately. Am I thinking correctly that there's two different kinds of methodologies that are being mixed into this?
Right, and that's why we can't really show it in the land inventory, because everything you show in the land inventory needs to be tied to a specific site. In ADUs, you don't know exactly where they're going to happen. So, we can, we'll, you know.
Greg, if I can, yeah, Greg, if I can supplement that, this is Veronica Tam, if I can supplement that response. It is precisely written in state law for ADUs, you can only count based on trend. You cannot count it based on capacity. So even though you may have a lot of single-family lots, or lots that can accommodate additional units, it is specifically written in state law that you can only count based on trend.
And I would, I would like to add that I've worked on a housing element update in another jurisdiction. And we did just that, we utilized a policy and a program that could count ADUs towards compliance with the RENA numbers. And it was based on the statistics of how many ADUs we would typically permit in a year. And it has been approximately ten for the past few years. We did recently update our accessory dwelling unit ordinance to be consistent with state law, which is much more permissive than we've had under prior ordinances. So even though we anecdotally anticipate additional ADUs, we still would only be able to accommodate approximately ten at this point moving forward for the next housing element per year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vaca, and Ms. Tam, and Mr. Martin. So, when, just a one follow-up question then. So when the city provides, I think it was in the second to last schedule, in the city, or second to last slide, when the city submits the draft housing element update to HCD, does the city, as part of that calculus, estimate, per Ms. Tam's input, what the trend is for ADUs as a part of that equation toward meeting the RENA numbers?
Yes, yes, we would.
Okay, all right. Okay, thanks for, thanks for answering this question. Do council, Vice Mayor St. Angelo?
Yeah, just to follow up. So, so if we do, if we are able to use the ADUs as, you know, towards the unit inventories, how is it determined if they're low, or moderate, or very low?
The ability to count, again, the ADUs as part of your RENA depends on comparable rents. And there are, you pretty much have to look at the size of the ADUs that you've been approving in your community. If they're generally smaller, maybe we can compare it to a one-bedroom or studio unit. But if they are larger units, because ADUs can go up to a thousand square feet, and that, those would probably be more aligned to a two-bedroom or even three-bedroom unit, and therefore then generally not going to be affordable for low-income households. SCAG actually developed a rent survey. They are waiting for HCD to approve it. They used Craigslist and looked at fifty-eight jurisdictions. They were able to pull about one hundred and fifty to one hundred and sixty rental listings and in about fifty-something jurisdictions across the SCAG region. And they're hoping to use that rent data as comparable rents that we can use and say, hey, these are the general rents for ADUs. It aligns with the affordability of very low, low, and moderate. Unfortunately, most likely, you're probably going to be able to count the ADUs towards moderate income unless they're tiny, unless they're smaller ADUs.
So really, that, if we're looking at our shortfall in that in that low category, predicting that we might have ten ADUs a year, and eighty is not necessarily going to make up that shortfall.
Correct. I think most likely what you would have is the ten units is not going to be, that is not going to be that helpful, but it's certainly a resource that a lot of communities are relying on. It depends on how permissive your new zoning ordinance is and how people respond to it. We do have the opportunity to inflate the, the trend by a certain factor, but it has to be reasonable. So if you've been doing ten a year, and your ordinance is even more flexible than the state, for example, or if you offer incentives to help people do, provide, build ADUs, or to, or you promote ADUs in the community, then you can reasonably argue that it's not ten units, I think we can do twenty. But, but you cannot say, well, I think we can do a hundred, you know, it just needs to be reasonable.
Thank you, that helps me understand it, thanks.
And I will say that actually, in our current analysis, we're showing the shortfall in that moderate income category. So I think that that's why that up.
My mistake, I thought I was in the low.
I would also like to add a very important detail, and that is that we've not included any projects that have pending general plan amendments. So, for example, we do have one pending general plan amendment that's an infill development site that's proposed over some formal industrial land. That would be apartments that if, in the instance of that project going through the public review process, and if it were to be approved, then if that occurs prior to this draft land inventory being completed, we could fold that into the land inventory, and that would also contribute to these housing categories, assuming that there are low and/or moderate income units within any other projects that are approved from now until, let's say, sixty months from now. And also, just want to point out, if it's denied, obviously, it's not in here as of today, so it wouldn't have any impact.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Vaca. Mr. Kildie, did you raise your hand?
Yeah, I did. I wonder if Mr. Vaca, Mr. Martin could answer. I just want to follow up a little bit on that moderate, and about the seventy-seven that were a little bit in a deficit. How do we counteract that? Could you expand just a little bit on that, please?
Well, I think partially, those ADUs are one way we identify, one possible way of addressing that shortfall that we identified. But then also, if we have a surplus in, where we surplus in the very low or low-income category, if it's affordable to that income level, it'll also be affordable to the moderate income level. So, that can be counted towards, so to speak, the moderate income category. Also, though, I don't know if Joe, or Joe, or Veronica, you would like to get into this a little bit, but we will be looking possibly for a little bit, but we will be looking possibly for, to find additional sites or additional units to provide a little bit of a buffer for potential, to account for potential development of some of these sites over the whole eight-year planning period. And I don't know if Joe or Veronica, you'd like to get into that more, if you think that's appropriate.
Well, I think in general, we don't want to submit to HCD a sites inventory that's exactly the number that you want, because they would nitpick sites inventory, especially when you have a sites inventory that's very tight. Their technical guidance right now recommends a buffer about 20%. It's not a requirement, but it's a, it's a, it's a good policy to do. There is a no net loss requirement under state law that if you continue to approve projects that are at lower density than you have assumed in the housing element, you want to make sure that the numbers balance back, that you're still going to be able to meet your, your regional housing needs allocation over the course of the eight years. So a little bit of a buffer would be prudent.
I would add that I think that we're very well positioned to prepare a housing element update that will be certified eventually by HCD based on these numbers that again are in very rough draft form. In other jurisdiction where I've worked on two housing element updates, the second of which, the most recent of which in that city, did require rezoning as part of the housing element programs, because it did not have sufficient land inventory to accommodate the RENA numbers. And they had to create additional development sites that were zoned by right with an increase up to a minimum of 20 units to the acre. So we're very fortunate here in that when we analyze our vacant sites and our entitled sites and the redevelopment sites, that we do have sufficient capacity at this time, even though there's a shortfall in the moderate category, but overall, we have enough development capacity to achieve our RENA numbers. So we're fortunate in that regard, and we're grateful to be in that position.
Thank you, Mr. Vaca and Mr. Martin and Ms. Tam. Let's see, I don't see any other questions from council members. So we have many attendees with us tonight that we want to welcome aboard, including members of our planning commission. And at this point, I would like to ask if there are any, if there is anyone who wishes to offer a public comment. And just, I want to remind anyone who wants to offer a public comment, that you will have three minutes to speak. Please be sure to mute all of the background noise, TV, radio, et cetera. There is a timer on the screen, which you can see. And when the time has elapsed, we will mute your microphone and move on to the next speaker. You can start by stating your name. At this point, Madam Clerk, I cannot tell if there are any hands raised based on, actually, I believe there are two hands raised, but I, my screen is not showing who they are. So Madam Clerk, can you please assist me in identifying these speakers?
Yes. So our first speaker will be Linda Bronschweiger, followed by a person who has called in by phone, and the last four digits of their phone number are 1-5-8-9.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Bronschweiger?
There we go. Can you see me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Good evening. My name is Linda Bronschweiger, and I live at 5276 Meadow Ridge Court in Camarillo for 21 years. I'm the Chair of the Camarillo Workforce Housing Committee, which is a part of the House Farm Workers Organization. Mayor, council members, planning commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to provide a couple of suggestions as part of the discussion this evening on housing element. Farmworker Housing Committee was founded in 2004 as a dedicated opportunity to support safe, decent, affordable housing in Ventura County for our farmworkers. We appreciate the opportunity to be involved in the update process and hope the City of Camarillo views us as a resource. We think it's important for the housing element to address directly the different types of farmworker housing, which are including permanent year-round affordable housing for farmworker families and individuals, seasonal migrant housing, and permanent affordable housing for retired, disabled, and senior farmworkers. The House Farmworker Fact Sheet of 2020 shows that the annual income to afford a two-bedroom apartment is $62,200. And yet, the average annual wage for Ventura County farmworker is $24,251 for berry farmers, $28,696 for crop production, and $33,279 for greenhouse nursery, floricultural production. The cost burden leads to sharing of housing and overcrowding. This year with COVID-19, it has shown that changes in California employee housing standards for seasonal workers may need to change. The required minimum square feet of living space likely does not allow for spacing appropriate for healthy conditions. In our opinion, the SCAG numbers for farmworkers in Ventura County is from dated statistics and are too low. We recommend that staff look at the UC Davis report, based on data derived from ag and farming employers. We're happy to share that report if you need so. Two areas that we feel need clarification. In 2012, the city prepared a farmworker housing guide that explained how to build farmworker housing. Is it still available and is it, is it up to date? We could not find it on the website. Also, please confirm and clarify the rezone, the RE zones, that are the only zone where farmworker housing is permitted using the State Definition Employee Housing Act. Finally, we highly recommend the city work cooperatively with local growers, ag-related businesses, farm bureau, and advocates. In my day job, I'm the CEO of the Housing Trust Fund and the newly incorporated Housing Land Trust. We are here to help. We have resources and opportunities for funding of affordable housing for farmworkers, which is one of our top priorities. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bronschweiger. Appreciate your comments. Madam Clerk, I think we're now going to the, and I'm sorry, I just don't see the hands on my screen, but I think we're going to the phone caller with the last four digits of their phone number, 1-5-8-9?
That's correct.
If we could hear from that commenter, please.
Yes. Yes, good evening, Mayor Tremblay, members of the city council, and planning commissioners listening. My name's Dennis Hargrave, and am I coming through?
Yes, you are, Mr. Hargrave.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak for just a moment here tonight. I would like to say, first of all, our firm Development Planning Services represents several of the orange entitled parcels identified tonight, as well as several of the green vacant sites, as well as the pending GPA that Mr. Vaca referred to this evening. Been a 35-plus-year resident of the City of Camarillo, and we have worked closely with staff, not only over the past decades, but in the past several years, on the Springville Specific Plan Implementation and the completion of Village at the Park. And we're glad to be able to be continuing that relationship with the city, both as planners and as residents in this town. I did want to address a couple of factors very briefly, one of which is the realistic potential for near-term development of the 600 units identified in the Camarillo Commons area. This, as we've seen over the past cycle of the housing element, has been problematic because there are multiple ownerships, and there are a number of viable businesses in place. And the ability to put together a large-scale development anywhere near the scale that's identified in the housing element is potentially not a realistic potential. It has not borne out itself over the previous cycle and for some time before that. And further, the community may or may not support that intensity of development in the long term, in addition to some commercial having 600 units along that Arneal corridor. So we just think that in the long term, the city should be looking at identifiable vacant parcels that maybe you haven't been looking at yet. And if we are, as a city, serious about providing workforce and non-age-restricted housing in the long term for younger people and families and special needs classifications, we will need to look at additional sites. One potential site that exists is the vacant commercial parcel at Springville Specific Plan. And we've spoken to the planning staff and the city manager recently about that. As we know, there's going to be an excess of commercial land for a long, long time. And just wanted to bring these points up tonight and look forward to working closely with staff. And we will submit some written comments during this review period. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hargrave. I don't see any questions. All right. I believe, Madam Clerk, we have, I know, one additional hand raised, and I'm sorry, again, I don't see it on my screen. So could you provide the name of that caller, please?
Yes, it's Priscilla Sisneros.
Thank you. Mrs. Sisneros?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, city council members, and planning commissioners. My name is Priscilla Sisneros. I'm an organizational development consultant and a board member of House Farm Workers. I've been a resident of Camarillo for the last four years, and I've Ventura County resident for over 28 years. So as you know, House Farm Workers is dedicated to supporting safe, decent, affordable housing for Ventura County farmworkers. Tonight, I wanted to tell you why I got involved in advocating for affordable housing, and also suggest two actions to support farmworker housing in the 2021 through 2029 housing element process. Early in my career, I worked in the neighborhood level with farmworkers and low-income families, implementing neighborhood revitalization projects as part of a nonprofit building affordable housing. This experience helped me to gain more insight into the life-changing opportunities housing that is affordable and safe provides. From being able to establish roots in a community to save for their children's future, the positive changes families can make, it's impacting economic and social for the long term at the neighborhood, city level, and beyond. Later, I transitioned to work for an international fresh berry producer, and I was able to manage their wellness initiatives, which require our team to be at the ranches partnering closely with the production teams. This experience allowed me to understand the ever-changing environment ag employers manage, and the importance of establishing stable and trained employee base to ensure the success of every season. Additionally, through philanthropic efforts at the company, I was part of several needs assessments, which often identified affordable housing as the number-one opportunity to help stabilize the ag community. The fact is that agricultural benefits, that agriculture benefits from a secure and stable-trained workforce. Farmworker families need affordable housing options, and we all benefit from a safe and secure food supplies. COVID-19 and the wildfire emergencies have further highlighted how interconnected we are, and show clearly that farmworkers are essential workers in our community and economy. Proactively seeking will hang you fruits and strategically planning for appropriate solutions to our housing supply, including affordable housing for farmworkers, is not only smart, but is essential to our economy. And for these reasons, we suggest the following axes to support farmworker housing in 2021 through 2029. Number one, create a program for the local government to collaborate with agricultural employers to identify sites and pursue funding sources available to HCD and the U.S. Department of Agricultural Rural Development Programs. And two, work in collaboration with all agriculture stakeholders to determine available resources and shortfalls. Invite local growers, other ag businesses like packing and distribution facilities, the farm bureau, farmworker advocates, and farmworkers to the table to look for solutions together. Thank you.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mrs. Sisneros. You timed it beautifully. Thank you very, very much. All right. Madam Clerk, I don't see any other hands raised on my screen. I can't see who had raised them, but I do have a count on that. Are there, are there any other members of the public who wish to make a comment on this item this evening? All right. Hearing none, we're going to bring it back to council for further discussion. Who on council would like to start the discussion? Mrs. Craven, followed by Mr. Kildie.
This is a discussion of receiving the materials that were presented at the first workshop and the comments made at the first workshop and the comments tonight. Is that what the discussion's about?
Yes, as I understand, Mrs. Craven, there is a, there is a form of motion for a receive and file, but that is the discussion.
Okay. I, I was just clarifying what the discussion is going to be about. I'm sorry, I don't have any discussion on it. I just wanted to know exactly what we were discussing.
Well, the, the suggested form of action is to receive and file the update based on the housing element update first workshop, and then the public input that's been received to date, including tonight's, but also provide concurrence with the current draft 2021-2029 land inventory. Mrs. Craven, you're need to unmute.
Sorry, I muted, so I could do that.
That's okay. That's happened to me, too.
I guess my comment would be, I would concur with the land inventory, with the exception of that one parcel, and I think it might be overrated as to how many units could be put on it. And that's the Keshmeshian parcel at the northeast corner of the city.
All right. Do other members of the, I think, Mr. Kildie, you wanted to be recognized next.
Yeah, I concur. I also think that we have to have, be problematic and be realistic about the Camarillo Commons as well. So, but I think it was a very thorough report, and there is concurrence, and I think it did identify, to a large extent, the 2021 and 2029 land inventory. And it also did explain, I believe, the moderate, the somewhat shortfall in the moderate, and how that could be mitigated. So my suggestion is, would be to move forward with the suggested action at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mr. Kildie. Vice Mayor Santangelo, followed by Mr. Molche.
You know, I tend to agree with the Camarillo Commons area. I just don't want us to over, to depend on that. And I, I also want to thank Ms. Tam and Mr. Martin for helping me understand the process and the numbers and the information we have so far. It was, is, it was very helpful for me to go through it like this, and I appreciate their time. And I also think that the, the speakers we had that spoke about farmworker housing deserve our consideration. And I would hope that as we move forward, that we do reach out to the ag community. We are an ag community. And reach out and see what opportunities are there.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Santangelo. Mr. Molche?
A quick question, and then I'll get to my comment. This is a question for Mr. Vaca. If I go back eight years or less than that, and I look at the last housing element we submitted, there are two properties that stuck out on top of my head that we didn't identify this time, that we did identify last time. There were two existing apartment complexes, one on Ventura Boulevard that is adjacent to R31 that we had, that we, what we identified as R31. And then another one at the corner of Mobile and Ponderosa. I call it the Mobile Apartments. I'm not sure what its formal name is. I know we identified those as prospects for redevelopment at a higher density eight years ago, and we did not identify those this year. Is there, how is that determined? Or why, why changes? And do we have to explain from, so that's not something, that's not something we have to explain from submission this evening?
No. However, going forward, based on updates and state law, once we do finalize the land inventory, if in the future we underdevelop, in other words, we don't develop the maximum capacities we anticipated, as Mrs. Tam indicated, we do have to create what's called a net-zero situation, where we would have to increase density elsewhere in the community to be even. So I'm hoping that makes sense. Basically, what it means is that we can't have a land inventory that is equal and achieves our numbers go down over here without coming up on the other side.
So the way I interpret that is, we've got to be, what we project here has to be viable, has to be probable. It kind of goes back to a comment that the vice mayor had mentioned earlier. It kind of goes back to a comment that the vice mayor had mentioned earlier. I think in part in Old Town, in Ventura Boulevard, is how with the likelihood or the probability is of development. I do share the concern with the Camarillo Commons project, although it's, it's, it could potentially, I mean theoretically, could hold that number of units. Whether that would ever be borne out in reality, the probability, I think, is rather low. So I have, just like Mrs. Craven has a concern with the Kishkaring project that's in the upper northeast and kind of what Mr. Kildy had said as well, I have a little bit of concern with the Camarillo Commons project and specific plan, as to whether or not we'd actually be able to realize the number of units that we've kind of identified here in this plan. So that would be my, my word of caution, that I think we need to kind of review that, double-check that.
Okay. I think that we're hearing that amongst most of the council. So we'll definitely be refining the numbers in the Camarillo Commons area. We have had some recent interest in some affordable housing, potentially redeveloping some vacant offices out there with some regular market rate housing and maybe some components of affordable housing. So we will be analyzing that in more detail. I would just like to offer a note of caution, though, and that is this, the Camarillo Commons is currently zoned to accommodate those units. And if we do not utilize that zoning that we currently have in place, we could get to a point where we have to physically rezone sites in the community that are otherwise at lower densities now. And I don't really think we want to necessarily explore that level of an expanded zoning program for this housing element. Because keep in mind, after this housing element in eight years, we're going to have to do another housing element. And while we're well-suited to accommodate the arena numbers for this cycle, it only becomes more and more challenging as time goes on. So I just want to offer that note of caution and I also want to say that we're going to be conservative, but it's very reasonable to use the existing zoning capacities that we have in place and that would be my strong recommendation that we do so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vaca. I had three things I wanted to say. First of all, I wanted to thank all three of our, of our public speakers, Ms. Bronschweiger, Mr. Hargrave, and Ms. Sisneros for your very thoughtful comments. I appreciate it very much. Number two, I had a question for you, Joe, and that is, can you give us an update on the proposed farmworker housing project that would be located near the De Salter project but outside the city limits?
I'm not prepared to give you a full update, other than the fact that the environmental document has been prepared. It's a county project.
Right.
It's not a city project. It is compliant with all the parameters of SOAR as a farmworker housing project and it's exempt from going to a vote. It includes an onsite wastewater treatment plant. It includes some facilities for the community members and residents that live there. We, early on, provided input to the county that we recommended that the design be consistent with what the standards are if it were to be constructed in Camarillo, even though it's not. And we do believe that the architecture and site plan has achieved a level of design that would be satisfactory if it were in Camarillo. It's well-designed, it's attractive, and I think that it's going to be a very well-suited project if it gets approved for a need in our community for ag workers. And I think it's an appropriate location, but we haven't made any official position on behalf of the city. We haven't taken a position one way or another in recommending approval or denial of that project. And we are looking at that project in more detail with the county planner. Later this month, we have a Zoom meeting set up to receive a presentation from the county planner. And we would most likely be updating the city council at some point after that.
And just two follow-up questions. How many, how many units is that project?
Don't quote me, but I believe it's in the upper 300s.
Upper 300s, okay. And what's the, what's the status of the CEQA work on that project?
I believe that the public review period has closed and now they're formulating the final EIR.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. And then finally, just an observation on Camarillo Commons, that was a, I recall, way back in the early 2000s, and Mr. Kildy and Mrs. Craven can certainly, I think, recall this better than I can. I mean, it was a, there was a lot of work and a lot of effort that went into, went into that whole specific plan process. My personal view is that because, because of the elimination of redevelopment agencies by the legislature and by the then-governor, some of the financial incentive or some of the financial tools that was taken away, was eliminated, but it's possible, there was a bill in the last session last year, and it was not a complete restoration of redevelopment agency, but it was somewhat of a restoration. And I think it was also in the context of the, what are called the EIFDs, the infrastructure districts. And that may provide some form of financial incentive, because I expect that, my understanding is that there will be additional legislation that will come back next year to consideration. So my only thought is that might provide some financial assistance or opportunity in the Camarillo Commons area. But that said, I, you know, I understand, I mean, Mr. Hargrave's points were well-taken in terms of the practical difficulties on it, but I also recognize, Mr. Vaca, your comments on it. So, all right, with all that, any other questions or comments from council members? If none, could I hear...
I'll move to receive and file the report.
I'll second the motion.
All right. I think I heard a motion from Mrs. Craven and I think Mr. Kildy won the race to second the motion. All right. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Can I interrupt? Would that motion also include to provide concurrence with the draft land inventory?
Thank you, that's part of the suggested staff motion, Mrs. Craven?
Yes, but I already stated my reservation with the, on the other one, but I'll add that.
All right. Mr. Kildy, do you concur?
I do.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a motion and a second, and I think it's clearly defined. Could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Craven?
Yes.
Councilmember Kildy?
Yes.
Councilmember Molche?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Santangelo?
Yes.
Mayor Tremblay?
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously.
All right, very well. Thank you very much. Thank you to our public, our planning commissioners as well, for attending and for the comments that the speakers provided. That brings us to a conclusion for tonight's meeting. So we're going to go ahead and let the record reflect that we're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 8:32 PM. Thank you very much.